I don't think I can do that, no.
Just before we get started, please remember if it's not your turn to speak or present to have your mic and video turned off, please.
Okay, are we all right to get started? Looks like it. I'm gonna go for it. All right, greetings. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. Let the record show that we have Commissioners Adams, Ellis, Glenn Winkle, Lawler, Winter, and myself tonight. So we are now at Commission Communications. Commission, are there any communications this evening? I don't see any. So we will move along to Staff Communications. Staff?
Good evening, Jenna Fox, Current Planning Manager. No Staff Communications this evening.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Right, the first item on the-
Chair, I apologize. Oh, sorry, Chair, I apologize. I was sleeping over here a little bit. Sorry about that. I did have one quick one. We have a new Associate Planner on the Long Range Planning Team, Sarah Lee Hickson, who you will be seeing tonight for the first time in the Landside Presentation. She has a long tenure in Oregon planning, including in the city of Gresham, where we actually worked together years and years ago, and brings a really wealth of both current planning and long-range planning experience. So wanted to make sure you got that intro before you saw her later. Thanks for letting me jump in.
Excellent, thank you. That sounds great. So the first item on the agenda is the application for LU3 2024-00057, the Fred Meyer Walker Road Wireless Facility, case number WF3 2024-00056. The applicant has the burden of providing the applica- the applica- provi- excuse me. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are Development Code Section 40.96.15.3C, the Wireless Facility 3. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal the decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following question will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? Commissioner Winter?
I am familiar with the site from previous applications, and I used to work out there. I did not make a specific site visit. I had no contact with anybody.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
I'm familiar with the site. I didn't go out there to look at this particular application, but I am aware of it. No other conflicts.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, similar to the other Commissioners, I've been out to the site as recently as maybe last week for retail purposes, but nothing for the purposes of this application, so no conflicts to report.
Commissioner Lawler?
Similar to my fellow Commissioners, I have had no contacts, I have no conflicts, and I am familiar with the site, although I did not make a specific site visit for this application.
Commissioner Adams?
I too have been out to that location, but I did not make a specific site visit.
Okay, and I have no to all three. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits, or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? Let the record show, no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation, followed by Commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given 20 minutes for its presentation, followed by the Commission's questions of the applicant. Then Members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to three minutes each. Then Members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to three minutes each. And then Members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have three minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. So we will now begin with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Brittany Gata, and I will be providing the staff presentation for the Fred Meyer Walker Road Wireless Facility 3 application. I'd also like to call out that there were two supplemental memos distributed for this project. One was sent yesterday on July 23rd, and the other was sent today. Both supplemental memos were correcting errors in the staff report. The applicant for this project is Atlas Tower 1 LLC, and the group proposes to develop a new 80-foot-tall wireless communications facility tower, which has been designed to resemble an evergreen tree on a commercially-zoned property. The project also includes site improvements associated with the tower, which include fencing, landscaping, and some utility work. And at this time, I'd like to call out that no antenna arrays are proposed to be installed on the tower. So a future wireless applic- excuse me, wireless facility application will be required at that time when that work is proposed. In all zoning districts except for Beaverton's industrial zones, new wireless communications facility towers require a Type 3 application. The proposed facility is on a site located at the intersection of Southwest Walker Road and Southwest 158th Avenue. This site is already developed with a retail land use, currently the Fred Meyer store. The project is on the east side of that site, closer to 158th. The site is zoned community service, which is a commercial zoning district, and wireless communications facilities are a permitted use in that zone. The site is located in the Five Oaks Triple Creek Neighborhood Association Committee area, and it is abutted by Public Rights of Way on all sides. You can see even to the north, northwest, Shendel Avenue borders the site, but across the street, there's a mix of residential, commercial, and civic land uses. The proposed facility is located on a leased portion of the Fred Meyer property. The area is shown outlined in red on this plan, and as you can see, it's bordered by parking spaces and drive aisles on all sides. The leased area is approximately 1,200 square feet. On this slide, we're showing a close-up of the proposed improvements that are associated with the new Monopine Wireless Communications Facility Tower. Monopine being a tower that has been designed to look like a pine tree. Around the border of the open enclosure, there is a six-foot-tall fence proposed, which would be constructed of chain-link fence, chain-link fencing with privacy slots, which would meet the code's requirement for a site obscuring fence around the facility. Landscaping is also included around the perimeter, which provides additional screening, meeting the code's requirements. And I will call out that screening landscaping is only required by the Development Code when a wireless communications facility is proposing an at-grade equipment shelter. As you can see on this plan, the applicant is not proposing those at this time. But similar to, you know, whenever an antenna array is constructed on the tower, a wireless facility application will be required. So instead of evaluating screening landscaping with a future wireless facility application, the applicant has chosen to install that screening landscaping now so that it can be evaluated with this Type 3 application. During the rest of the presentation, I'm just going to go into a bit of detail on some key findings that were included in the staff report. The first one is Criterion 3 of the Wireless Facility 3 application, which is evaluating if the location, size, shape, height, and arrangement of the proposed use and structure is compatible with the existing and future allowed land uses on the site. So I'm including a screenshot from one of the applicant's submitted simulations in the Visual Impact Report, which is showing the view of the tower from the Fred Meyer parking lot. And as you can see in the photo, what someone would be seeing in, from the perspective of the parking lots, is primarily primarily an enclosure with screening landscaping around it with that monopine in the distance. And when you're viewing it from the further out surrounding streets, similarly, staff found that the Visual Impact Report demonstrated that the tower's design and its height does adequately mitigate the visual impacts caused by it, since the Fred Meyer site is surrounded by mature evergreen trees. The next criterion that I'd like to discuss is Criterion 8. This is addressing if the quality, location, size, and design of the proposal will have any adverse effects on the existing or approved abutting land uses. So again, in this case, we're evaluating how the facility affects the surrounding parking lot associated with the existing retail land use. So we evaluated the project for its potential impacts to safe use of the drive aisles on the north and south side. And due to the compact nature of the proposed shrubbery in the screening landscaping, staff had no concerns about potential impacts to drive aisles and did not identify any adverse impacts. However, screening landscaping does adversely affect two parking stalls at the southwest and northeast corners of the enclosure, in addition to a site obscuring fence. So I'll use my red pointer to show you. So we have the site obscuring fencing here, obviously surrounded by landscaping. And this red line is just roughly showing what a what a vehicle may have for a sightline as they back out of that parking stall. So in order to minimize the visual obstructions that someone may experience backing out of a parking stall on these two sides of the facility, staff is recommending a condition of approval that only arborvitae shrubbery is used within five feet in both directions of the southwest and northeast fence enclosures. This would be coupled with the code requirement for three-foot maximum spacing between shrubs. However, this would significantly reduce the amount of vegetation located in this sightline area. And staff finds that by meeting that condition of approval, it would adequately mitigate the potential safety impacts in those areas. And furthermore, the typical driver behavior in parking lots is very, is quite slow and deliberate. So that coupled with the availability of approximately 740 other parking stalls that are not affected by the proposal, staff finds that the proposal is adequately minimizing those potential impacts to the abutting use. And lastly, I'll note that staff did evaluate the proposal's compliance with the Wireless Communications Facility Development Standards of Chapter 60, and the project was found to meet all applicable standards. And we are recommending two conditions of approval related to signage and screening landscaping for the project. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of this project as noted in the July 17th, 2024 staff report, and as corrected by the supplemental memos dated July 23rd and 24th. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff with regard to the proposed application? Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, Brittany, sir, maybe a simple one. It sounds like the application is really more for a framework for future installations of antennas and such. Is there any worry that there are, that there are future problems with getting approval for the eventual need for power, wiring, conduit, et cetera, that would have to be run into this facility to support whatever the eventual antennas are?
No, there are no concerns. As far as the plans show, they do have utility easements in place that will serve the facility, and I believe they are installing some of that conduit. I think the applicant can clarify in more detail. But for the purposes of this application, they meet all of the utility requirements, and we don't have any concerns about the ability to meet them in the future.
Cool, thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
Brittany, I was wondering, I read through the material, I didn't see anything regarding the fencing and any kind of barbed wire. Is there any kind of concern about residents or the community trying to climb the tower?
That's a great question, and I appreciate you mentioning the barbed wire. There is a proposed line of barbed wire fencing at the top of the fence, so it's between six feet and six and a half feet, so it's quite far up. Barbed wire fencing is allowed. It's also allowed by the city code. So we don't have concerns about people trying to climb over there and being injured, but it is allowed, so we are considering that in compliance with the design standards.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lawler?
I was, I'm just curious about the findings that I found in the report about, you know, the lack of service. I believe it was T-Mobile. And I'm assuming that they were going to be locating their facility at the base of the, and their antenna, yet I hear that they're not. So I'm just curious how to rectify the fact that there's a call in the code for, you know, is there a need for this facility? And the lack of any specific user of the facility.
Thank you for that question. Yes, the code does require that demonstration of need that you mentioned. From the perspective of the approval criteria and the development standards, the submitted coverage analysis does demonstrate that need, just as you mentioned. So from our perspective, the tower can be constructed in this location as there is a need, which can be satisfied by the future application submittal for a wireless facility for someone to come in and put antennas on there. So we are, we are all squared up for compliance with the approval criteria for this application, and I believe the applicant does expect a carrier to come in shortly and submit those applications.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions of Commissioners? All right, thank you very much.
Sorry, Chairman Ken, and this is Commissioner Lawler's fault. She made me think about this. I was rereading that requirement, and I'm sorry, Brittany, this is just maybe a pedantic thing. Tell me to be quiet if I need to, but it looks like that the the coverage analysis requirements, they're actually not requirements in terms of where one of these installations are placed to provide coverage to the public. They are requirements that ask you to test whether or not this installation could have been put somewhere else or co-located somewhere else i- in terms of still achieving its own, its own goal of building this product. So it's actually, it's not a coverage to the public requirement, right?
I'm gonna read it one more time. Hang on one moment. I suppose I don't know exactly how to answer that, but you're right that it's not looking at, it's not as simple as, you know, what new coverage would it bring? It's, it is demonstrating that there is a lack and and what the new service level would be within the search ring. I am going to just quickly glance at the staff report to see if I'm missing anything.
I don't think it's super German. I just wanted to make sure that I understood what that, what that particular call-out on 60, 70, 60 was.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else to add. I appreciate the comment. But we did find that it met the submittal requirement for the coverage analysis.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. The applicant will now have 20 minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and addresses for the record.
Hello, my name is Sandra Layton. I am the Project Manager for this site. I work for Atlas Tower. I, our office is located in Boulder, Colorado. And we've also got Mike Powers here, who is pretty much listening. He is our legal team. Hey, does everyone see my screen?
Yes, we are.
All right, awesome. So, yeah, so I've introduced myself, Atlas Tower. We're a business that has, we've been in business for over 15 years. Our towers in the US are in the US and Sub-Saharan Africa. We work with all carriers and provide opportunities to utilize one location. Our intent is to get, to equip our towers to have multiple carrier presence and building multiple towers in places. So we're here requesting approval to construct an 80-foot monopine. It's a fenced and screened compound. It will be an unmanned facility with visits approximately one per month, carrier and landscape maintenance. Look, it'll be located in the southeast corner of the Fred Meyer store parking lot. This won't answer one of the questions that actually came up while we're here. So T-Mobile has identified the coverage and network issue in this area of Beaverton. So the tower will improve the coverage in the area by offloading congestion from the neighboring site. So there is a tower neighboring, but it is a very congested area, and so they need to offload some of that, some of that stress off that tower to help give them better coverage. It will also improve the 5G penetration coverage to this area. T-Mobile has approved this site as the best location to meet the coverage needs and the service to the public. Fred Meyer Store was willing to allow the communications facility to operate from their property, and the location is appropriate for the zoning needs, or zoning codes, I'm sorry. If this was their preferred location. The property has enough space to fit the facility. It's properly zoned. It meets setback requirements and is also away from residential properties. Those are the benefits in this site. We had our Five Oaks, we met with the Five Oaks committee on October 10th of last year, prior to submitting our application per the Development Code 50.30. And we received positive feedback from all, from the attendees that were there. They agreed the service was needed. They said they anticipate new growth as well, and there were no concerns expressed during the meeting. So this, these images show, on the left there, shows the existing coverage. The yellow is not great. That's just, that's showing very limited coverage. However, the green on the right is showing coverage with the new tower, how it would offload. So they do have some coverage from that other tower, but the new one will give better coverage. So that is their goal with this site. The Fred Meyer Store property is zone commercial. As mentioned in the previous slide, it is owned properly for this facility. We're proposing the 80-foot stealth design, which is in line with Code 60.7.70.35.10. The proposed monopine will be painted brown with green foliage, consistent with a pine tree. Monopine tower will be designed to accommodate a minimum of two antenna arrays. That is also consistent with Code 60.70.35.16. We have been working with Beaverton City, the planning department, for almost two years on this site and have made several changes to our site to be compliant with the zoning code. We've made adjustments to the design, concealment, the landscape, and we have met all zoning requirements. The image shown to the right is a snippet of Page Z1 of our zone design, which shows that we meet and exceed the required 85-foot setback. The wireless facility is designed to blend with the existing mature tree foliage in the parking lot islands, along with the well-established evergreens along the outside of the perimeter, but also the existing use of the utility poles. Which also, to answer the question that came up earlier, as far as the utilities, with that, just since I'm on utility, we will run the utilities to the site. The carrier will take the utilities from our H-frame and have their own utilities to their antennas. I want to highlight the landscape portion of the site proposal. The landscape will be installed within a four-foot-wide planter along the outside of the fenced area. The shrubs we are proposing are Portuguese laurels, skip laurels, and emerald green arborvitae. The shrubs were recommended by a local landscape company. The new shrubs, they will be planted, at the time of planting, they will be four to five feet in height and will grow to a minimum height required of 10 feet. Shoals Landscape Lawn Care and Landscape LLC will install required equipment and maintain the shrubs to ensure 100% survival rate within the first year. The routine maintenance will encourage the plant's plant health habits and include pruning to keep the plants from encroaching visibility and parking spaces. Atlas agrees to revise the current design to ensure the correct distance between the plants at the corners as the planner talked about earlier. So we can, we can alleviate that. Here, I have added a picture, just as additional for your information. This is a picture looking toward the entrance of Fred Meyer from our, from our proposed site. This, this image is an image looking just west of our proposed site, looking towards Les Schwab. These are the photo simulations, so this is, this is showing, this page is showing you from where the images were taken. I'll explain that as we go through them. So this is View 1. This was taken from 158th Avenue, just north of their entrance, on 158th. The first, the image on the left, you can see there's, there's now, on the right, you can see they have the square around it, and that is actually indicating the new facility. This is, View 2 is taken from Walker- Uh, this is uh view two is taken from Walker Street near the east side of their entrance. And again, the right side shows the new facility. Uh, this one is view three. This is taken from the parking lot near the southern entrance facing Walker. So they have, they actually have two entrances facing Walker. But there's one that's set back a little bit and the one that's out further south. So this is taken from that entrance uh facing Walker. Um, this is just some resources uh just for your information. Um, these are some common questions that come up, and so I wanted to post these just so you can look them up if needed. Um, in closing, um Atlas Tower is excited to assist T-Mobile in providing better service to Beaverton. Atlas Tower meets all zoning requirements and requests approval for this project. Uh, thank you very much, and I I appreciate your time. You can visit our website. Here is the information for our website. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? I have one quick question, Sandra. Um, you mentioned that uh you're gonna have the landscape uh company that's doing the installation do kind of a one-year establishment maintenance. Um, but is somebody providing long-term maintenance, or is that Fred Meyer? Um, some of the plants you've selected get ten feet wide, so they're very big for a four-foot wide planter. Um, so just wondering how we're gonna keep those contained, given that there were sight, you know, sightline concerns and other things like that.
Exactly. So to answer that, um, I actually added one year in my presentation because that was what was required for code.
Sure.
Our contract with them is actually for a two-year contract. Um, I think it would be in Atlas's best, it it doesn't mean we're not gonna have servicing. Um, but I think it would be in Atlas's best interest after two years to reevaluate, see what the service is like. Um, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna say we're committing to more than two years at this time. But at this time, we do, we do have an estimate from them and plan to continue service with them and sign this two-year service contract, but we do say that we told them that we need to have one hundred percent survival after one year.
Okay, I think that sounds great. Uh, just as a note, I would encourage you to have your landscape contractor really look at the plant material. Try to pick things that maybe don't get wider than four feet, so that if you aren't kind of continuing to maintain and sure things that you don't end up with things overgrowing and the city in the future.
I agree.
Okay. That was it for me. Um, any other questions, Commissioner Lala, or sorry, Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, uh, maybe along the same lines, actually, to that question. Do you have accountabilities? So you're leasing the space from uh if it's Fred Meyer or whomever their landlord is, do you have accountabilities to to maintain either either, you know, no encroaching plants onto their parking spaces or other cleanliness items? You know, that they would be concerned about because you're you're housed in the middle of their space?
Well, we um as a as a uh tenant landlord relationship, um, I think that would that would be, you know, something that women need to do. We have not had that problem in the past. Um, and we would, you know, we have carriers that are going in there. Um, carriers would inform us if there was any torts, any sort of overgrowth, if there's any problems, if there's any weeds. Um, that's typically how it's worked, and we've always had a, we've been able to address it, so. This is not something that's been a historical problem, is my point, but we are, we are on top of it for the first two years from the get-go and definitely the first year per code.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Uh, thank you for being here tonight, Sandra, and your presentation. Um, I'm very intrigued by this concept of the monopine design and that it can blend in with trees. Um, I've studied the material, and I'm just really having a hard time visualizing how this will really look like a tree. The other thing that I'm confused about is in the future, when the antennas are added, um, you know, how do all those branches remain on the pole? I I guess I'm concerned that number one, we don't really know what it's gonna look like right now, and we're being asked to approve it. And in the future, we don't know how the addition of the antennas and that application are gonna affect the look of it. Do you have any images or any other details you can share with us on what it really looks like or how it's put together so that it doesn't look worse than just a bald cell tower?
You know what? Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, and I meant to point that out in my presentation. I'll pull that up here in a second and we'll show you. Um, but uh, you know, the antennas, we can design those to be hidden behind the branches. Or they can kind of, they can kind of protrude, but they are typically painted the same color as the branches, so they blend well. Um, please keep in mind that this is a wireless facility, so it is not a tree. However, um, our our intent is, from a distance, when you're when you're looking at it from a distance, it does not stick out like a sore throne. It somewhat blends. People, it it's something people can get used to. It doesn't, it just doesn't look horrible. So that's that's part of the the blending design and idea and effort. Um, but just just understand, it is, it is a facility. We're just doing, making our best effort to make it not look poor.
Understood. What will it look like from the ground for all the shoppers that are visiting Fred Meyer and parking there? When you look up, what up close, what will it look like?
Um, it will look like um you know, up close, and people are gonna know. Um, they're gonna know what it is, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna stick out because of all the vegetation around it. Um, with the the shrubs that we're planting around it, um, they are required to grow uh at minimum ten feet tall, and actually, some of them will grow taller than that, so they will be way taller than the fence. So I'm not sure that people are really gonna notice it unless they're really looking up, but I would think people coming out of the store are actually gonna be looking down and loading their cars, uh maybe getting children out of the car. But um, but I I understand your point. Um, and I'm not saying that nobody's gonna notice. It's it's just, it's just not gonna be as obvious as it would be if we put, you know, some other sort of, some other type there that may not, we're screening it um and we're we're following code.
Okay, thank you so much.
You want me to show you that picture again? I could find that.
That would be great, yeah, if you have it.
Let me, oops, sorry, I turned off the wrong thing. Yeah, I'm meant to point it out.
Uh, this is Mike Power as well. While uh Sandra's looking for the photo, I'll also add that when the antennas are installed on a monopine structure, uh trees, tree branches are removed and then changed in size or or shape as needed to get the antennas in there. And the antennas are also typically enclosed in what we call a sock. And the sock is a uh if you can imagine a a maybe a a sheet or a rug of grass. And that goes around around the antennas. I know that sounds terrible, but when when it's put, when the antennas are shrouded in this vegetation-like sock and then put on the taut, tauted branches, it really does a pretty good job of concealing concealing the antennas themselves.
Okay, great.
And I think I failed to add that picture. I'm very sorry. I'm gonna email it to myself, and maybe I can pull it up for you.
Well, while you're doing that, I have a couple of other comments, actually. Um, one comment was, or Commissioner Ellis was asking about the code. And uh, the way I understood the code, your code is that that specific uh question about um alternative tower structures in the air. That is something Atlas Tower does every single time we are engaged by T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon or others to build a structure for them. We do not build sites if there are already uh structure nearby that can serve their needs. It just doesn't work. It hardly meets, it generally doesn't meet code. And it also often is not really just a good business proposition for us. And so when we started this project, one of the things we did is pursuant to that code that that Commissioner Ellis uh um was was asking about. We made sure that we met that code. In other words, we did a competing tower structural analysis. We looked at towers that are existing nearby, and we went to T-Mobile and we had a conversation with their their RF radio frequency engineers and had a serious conversation about why aren't you going on those sites? And they, again, uh, talked about the overload of their other antennas in the area. This is a super congested um data area, and so that's the answer to that. And then the last thing I wanted to comment on, this this is a just a just a one-off, is that um you'll be pleased to know that you, it is, it is literally impossible to climb a monopole tower. I've tried it. As a joke, I wanted to put a fake bear, a stuffed bear in the tree for a photo for fun. It's not possible. You cannot climb a monopole because between the branches, which are actually made out of metal and all of the the shrubbery, the fake shrubbery, it's not possible to climb. And so that's kind of a cool um extra uh benefit to this design. No one's gonna climb it. I mean, no one's gonna illicitly climb it. The folks, the technicians that knew, wanna work on the site, they will actually be removing branches in order to do their work, and then they'll put the branches back on.
And this is, yeah, thank you, Mike. Um, and this is the the picture I thought I put in there, so. Um, but you can see the fencing compound, and it's actually got to somewhat like what we're what we're proposing. Um, so it it covers up this base, so what you see is this.
And you can see the socks on that picture, actually. You can see how the antenna.
Is there any other questions? You may leave it up if you guys want a screenshot of it or something, or.
Hello? Sorry if I dropped off for a moment.
I think we all did.
I did too.
Oh, that was exciting. I'm in a room. You start the public testimony part, just to make sure we capture that. Uh, so we are now at the public testimony portion for this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the application, then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. So let's begin with testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If you're calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Um, let's see, do we have anyone? I do not see anyone. Um, so we will move on to public testimony in opposition to the application. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? I am not seeing anyone, so uh last, last but not least, shall we um move on to people who are neither in favor nor opposed who wish to speak? Again, I don't see anyone, so let the record show that we do not have any testimony, public testimony tonight. Um, so with that, uh, does staff have any final comments?
No final comments to share. Thank you, Chair McCann.
Okay, with the final comments completed, I will close the public hearing, and as is standard procedure, I will randomly pull commissioners to state their conclusions to the application. Uh, Commissioner Adams.
I approve.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, no major questions for me. It seems to meet the bill.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Um, I was very concerned about the look of it, but they've answered all my questions, and I'm comfortable that it meets the approval criteria, so I support it.
Uh, Commissioner Lawler?
Yeah, I'm pleased whenever a wireless facility proposes a stealth uh design, and this one meets the bill. And I believe it meets the approval criteria.
Commissioner Winter?
Um, yeah, it wasn't too long ago that we were approving stealth towers that would be round painted metal poles without any shrubbery or foliage. This is a wonderful, refreshing improvement. Um, I think the application meets all the facts, beats the facts, the findings required. And so, complete agreement.
Okay, um, and uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure how much this is gonna look stealth in the middle of the Fred Meyer parking lot, but um, I do appreciate the effort uh to try to have it blend in with the skyline, and I do believe that it meets all of the criteria. So with that, is there a motion to, uh, is there a motion?
Commissioner Plan Commission, I move to approve LU three two zero two four dash zero 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 five seven based on the facts and findings the staff coordinated uh July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, the addition of the two additional memos dated uh July twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and with the conditions of approval containing staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? No, I do not see any. So a vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Adams?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes unanimously. After, um, so the planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Preverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. The next agenda item is a work session on the Cooper Mountain Community Plan Development Code updates. Staff has requested the work session to be held in two parts. Part one will focus on open space and parks, and part two will focus on landslide hazards and tree applications. Public comment will be taken separately for each pro- portion of the work session. The order of the work session tonight will be as follows. We will begin with the city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff by the commission. The planning commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes and must be directed toward the work session item. The commission may ask additional questions of individuals providing comments uh uh providing comments of staff. Uh, so we will now begin with the staff presentation uh presented by Long Range Planning Manager Brian Martin for part one, Parks and Open Space.
I'm gonna hop in just for a second and then hand it off to Brian.
Sounds great.
Good evening, Chair McCann and Commissioners. Um, Rob Zoller, the project manager for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. Tonight, I'm joined by several members of the Cooper Mountain team, including Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager, Arnold Satinsky, Planning Division Manager, Jana Fox, current planning manager, and Sarah Lee Hickson and Lauren Russell, both associate planners, all of whom may participate in the discussion. The Cooperan Community Plan Project is planning for an expansion area. We are here tonight to see your feedback on draft development code updates for the expansion area. Because there is a lot of material to go through, um, we have divided the work session into two parts, so tonight might feel like two work sessions. Part one will focus on open space and parks. Part two will focus on landslide hazards and tree applications. After the staff presentation for each part, the planning commission can ask questions and then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Before we present code updates, I'd like to briefly discuss the project's schedule. This is the last scheduled work session for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. After we receive your feedback tonight, we'll refine the draft code updates and draft the staff report. The planning commission hearing to consider the adoption of amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code is scheduled for October 16th. The city council hearing is scheduled for December 3rd. Now I will hand it off to Brian Martin, who will present updates to the open space and parks approach.
Thanks, Rob. Hello, Chair McCann and Commissioners. My name is Brian Martin. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager for the city. We've been working on this project for quite a while and we showed you some draft code regarding parks earlier. And that was based on city staff and Twalton Hills Park and Recreation District staff working throughout the project to integrate parks, trails and natural areas into the plan. The desired outcomes are that we provide a community park and neighborhood parks that are developable, which means they're relatively flat and they have enough land outside natural resources. So they can accommodate recreational amenities such as playgrounds, playing fields, picnic areas, paths and other features. And that the parks and open spaces are near where people live, work and visit. So we appreciate the THPRD and their cooperation and collaboration along the way. We've brought this topic to you tonight because we have to adjust our parks' open space approach. Because we have new information and some city council suggestions to consider. This gives us a chance to hear planning commission's thoughts before the new rules are brought to you at the October 16th hearing. First, I plan to describe the parks approach we shared with the planning commission earlier this year. Then I will describe the new draft approach. And as you all heard already, then we'll take some public comments. After that, the planning commission can ask questions of staff and we also have staff members from THPRD available to answer questions during that time. It's really helpful to have the THPRD staff here because they have knowledge of park district plans and level of service expectations for parks within the district. And the district also buys park property, builds parks and operates and maintains parks. So lots of expertise on that side. Next slide, please. Now I'll briefly describe the previous approach that we showed you a few months ago. And it involved using the parks overlay, which are the small green geographies or blobs on the zoning map that you see there. And the parks overlay is an important tool because it identifies specific locations where parks are feasible and they provide easy access to people living or working or visiting here in the future. The draft code required dedication of park locations when development occurs, which means they would be, you know, most likely to be acquired by THPRD and open to the public. It included eight neighborhood parks and one community park totaling about 32.8 acres. And properties in Cooper Mountain area that did not have parks overlay were required to provide open space. Oh, if they didn't have parks overlay or the resource overlay on their property of a sufficient size, they were required to provide open space with tree canopy. Next slide, please. So the two inputs I mentioned before are the new information is number one, we learned that requiring dedication and public access creates a risk of constitutional taking, particularly in light of recent case law. And the second thing that happened was in the June 18th work session, the mayor and city council suggested the staff reduce acreage in the parks overlay. So some of the comments we heard were, well, if Cooper Mountain Nature Park has expanded, which is, you know, being worked on but is not finalized yet, it would reduce the need for parks potentially. They also mentioned that McKernan and Rockin Point, there you go, the names on there, but Rockin Point. McKernan is close to Winkelman Park, which is an existing community park in the THPRD system. So there might be some, there might be some service already being provided to that area for parks and rec. Skyline and Siler Ridge Neighborhood Parks would be future neighborhood parks that were on the parks overlay are relatively close together on opposite sides of 175th there near that purple mixed use zone. And it was also mentioned that trail connections to the West Side Trail are a priority. So we're, we're thinking of all that as we kind of try to come up with a new approach. Next slide, please. I'll start with the constitutional taking issue and the new open space approach. So to respond to that taking issue, staff has adjusted the draft code, shift away from required dedications and public access and instead require a certain amount of open space per development. The open space required to be 10 to 15% with most properties in the CMRM yellow zone required to provide 15% open space on the site. These are generally, a lot of these are large, especially the ones with the parks overlay are large properties. So the, the 15% would provide at least a park sized area in most cases. If a parks overlay blob is shown on the property, the required open space would have to be located in the parks overlay first. And then elsewhere on the site, if the requirement isn't fully met. Because no dedication is required, THPRD would then have to work with property owners or developers to acquire the land and for compensation such as money or system development charge credits. Next slide. If, when the open space is located inside the parks overlay at development, the code would require some park amenities be provided, such as lawns, playgrounds, playing fields, the examples that I mentioned earlier. And this is the same basic requirements that we had for parks that are permitted, THPRD, public parks that are permitted that you saw in the code, the draft code earlier in the year. No tree planting would be required for the open space in the parks overlay. And if the land were dedicated to THPRD, the parks amenities wouldn't be required. And the open space would count 150% toward the property's open space requirement. So if two acres were dedicated to THPRD, the property owner slash developer would get, would get credit for three acres of open space requirement. It's an incentive for the dedication. Any additional required open space beyond the parks overlay blob would be, could be located anywhere on the development. But would have to be planted to achieve a 50% tree canopy if outside the resource overlay. Next slide, please. So what does this mean for outcomes for, for open space? The previous approach, meaning the code we showed you early in the year, showed 32.8 acres of parks required in the parks overlay with eight neighborhood parks and a community park. Assuming the open space requirements are placed in the parks overlay, as I just described, and transferred to THPRD, which is not required, but is, is the outcome we would hope for. We'd anticipate that this approach will lead to 26.1 acres of park. This outcome, these outcomes are projected based on the size of the existing lots and the 15% open space requirement, as well as the amount of land within the parks overlay on each property. Sometimes the parks are on multiple properties. And these are estimates that might vary slightly depending on the proposed development. The reductions from the previous proposal are shown in red text on the map. And they would be to the community park, which would go down to 8.5 acres. Siler Ridge Neighborhood Park, which would go down to 2.3 instead of three. And Skyline Neighborhood Park, which would, if it were still there, go down to 1.3 instead of two. As a reminder, this is the code approach, a development code approach on the city's part to encourage parks provision or open space provision. THPRD can still seek to buy parks from willing sellers to provide parks and recreation and meet their level of service standards. Although city staff understands that some sellers are willing and some are not. So that can be challenging. Next slide, please. So that was an explanation of the basic structure of the new open space approach. I want to remind us that the council also was suggesting we reduce the parks overlay. The number of, like the amount of acreage in the parks overlay. So if the parks overlay is reduced in response to council directions, staff suggests Skyline Park. Even though the council mentioned occurring in Skyline. This park is just west of the Kinkon 175th, directly west of the purple Cooper Mountain High Density Residential Zone. In this location, the resource overlay to the north and south of that park mean fewer homes will be nearby. And the new open space approach likely means it will be smaller, perhaps only 1.3 acres. Because 15% of that lot size would produce 1.3 acres of open space requirement. I will note that THPRD has set a park between 175th and that green collector that goes down north south is necessary, you know, somewhere in there. A park is necessary somewhere in there to meet their level of service standards. Next slide, please. Removing the skyline from the parks overlay could result in an additional 1.3 acre reduction down to 24.8 acres. There would be a smaller, so overall, there'd be a smaller community park and seven neighborhood parks in the overlay under that, under that outcome. So one really important consideration here is that the city council did not know about the constitutional taking issue and the new open space approach. When they discussed this topic during the June 8th work session, because staff was just learning about it at the time and trying to understand what it would mean for the city's approach to open space. So they didn't know the new code approach would result in a projected reduction of 6.7 acres of open space or parks. At the time, they suggested the staff remove a park from the parks overlay. So that means tonight, staff is looking for commissioners' thoughts about the best approach to meeting council expectations about the parks overlay. Given the different outcomes expected with the new regulatory approach, that does not include a requirement for folks to dedicate parks to THPRD. Staff would like commissioners' thoughts on whether removing a neighborhood park from the overlay is necessary to respond to council comments when our new code approach is already reducing open space and parkland required. Next slide, please. And one more minor thing to just give you a heads up about so you're not surprised in October when you see it is that there may be some minor modifications to the parks overlay in the packet you see at the hearing. And they're in shown in concept here, they could be slightly different than you're seeing right now. The first one is moving, reducing down the community park overlay boundary to focus any open space provided in the areas most developable for parks instead of in the resource overlay where it would just be, you know, natural area, not something like park, playing fields or amenities. The middle one is just ensuring that park overlay geography in the northeast corner up by the camera roundabout is actually three acres. It's a little short of that now. So it's just a tweak that we need to fix. And on the right hand side, just simplifying the geography of that park and putting on one property instead of putting it on two or three to reduce it to the two acres that's required in that area. So those are just, those are FYIs, but happy to hear any thoughts about those as well. Next slide, please. With that, we'll go to the questions. That's, the staff presentation is done. So the questions about, if you have any comments or questions about the new code approach or the, the idea of removing a park from the park overlay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. So now well, I guess, are there any questions from commission members? Conversation. Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, Brian, thank you for, for going through that. Maybe before my question, just some clarifying questions. Looking at the, the suggested or proposed removal of that park. And sorry, I've now forgotten the name of it, but it's the one on the left or west side of 175th there that's near. Yeah, yeah. So with the argument being that it's close to Siler Ridge. How much, how much density? Because I'm looking, I'm thinking about that road in my head and across the street from Winkelman Park next to the fire station there with the, the new, the new neighborhood that's already placed in. That's a, that's a busy neighborhood and up and down that road as this area gets developed, that's, it would seem to me that that will end up being one of the densest portions of this, of this development or, or most populated anyway. Am I reading that correctly?
Commissioner Ellis. Yeah, the, I didn't give a zoning refresher as part of the presentation, might have been helpful. Just in general, the, the yellow areas have a minimum density of 10 units per net acre. The purple, red and orange have a minimum of 34 units per acre net. So there, there are going to be things like apartments, townhouses and denser multifamily, or sorry, middle housing developments. And so if you look at if you, if you see red or orange or purple, those would be the denser spots.
Those, those would be the minimally denser spots, not necessarily what ends up being the densest spots, right?
Well, there, there's a minimum density that's quite a bit higher in those areas. So you're, you're definitely going to see, they're definitely going to be, let me see. They're required to, to have, they're going to end up being the form of apartments or denser townhouses. Or now in the yellow, you can have like a sixplex on a 5,000 square foot lot. But you're going to see a lot more single family houses or duplexes and things like that than you would in the other colors.
Okay, cool. So all of that to say that, that 175th, like even though, even though it's, it's not physically a massive road, like it is, it is a practical barrier. And I think one of the public comments probably nailed it on the head, which is, you know, to have kids or families or whomever transit from east to west across that road to hit those parks is, is kind of a big deal. And so I, I think there's a big advantage to having both of them on both, even though they're, they're relatively close. Because anybody who's on the west side of that road, asking them to go east or vice versa is a significant issue. And unless we drastically slow down the traffic on that road and then add, you know, numerous, numerous pedestrian controls. I, I would agree with that public commenter that, that reducing the number and then asking, asking somebody on that one side to go to the other is pretty problematic. So that'd be my, my first thought about those two relatively smaller parks, even though one may seem superfluous in light of the other. I, I would not say it is.
Commissioner Ellis, are you? Okay, you put your hand down. Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
I have a similar comment in that, that purple high density housing. I think that area of the development, sorry, no. By 175th. Where the park is, yeah. I think that that, you know, community is going to need access to parks probably more than any other development in the, the neighborhood, other than the other two high density developments. So I, I don't want to see removal of a park in that specific area because those families need access to it the most. In my opinion.
Commissioner Lawler.
I guess I'm seeking a, maybe a fuller picture of this whole area and ultimate development by thinking about school sites. Typically, they have some, at least minimum, I mean, ball fields or whatever, you know, play equipment. Has there been any discussions with the school district that, that kind of focus on where they may want to have either elementary? Has there been any discussions with the school district that that kind of focus on where they may want to have either elementary or middle schools in this area that could? In theory, plug some of the holes in the recreational needs of the communities.
Yeah, Commissioner, thanks for asking. Uh there are two school districts. There's a two school districts we're working with here, the. Roughly the west half is the Hillsborough School District and the east half is the Beaverton School District. Um last time we talked to them, um. The Beaverton School District wasn't planning to pursue a school site in. Cooper because they have a school site in South Cooper Mountain, very near the southern border of Cooper. Um and Hillsborough at the time said that they would be able to serve the that area with their existing schools in their district. So when you're talking about, I'm not aware of any uh school adjacent parks that will happen. Um public school adjacent parks that will happen in Cooper.
Okay, well, thank you.
That, that pushes me further than like on what, what Commissioner Lawler saying is that, yeah, if there's, if there's not going to be. If we can't count on, because, because yeah, that is often a huge source of recreation. Uh space and and playground space and so on and. And I I I would imagine from what we've heard from British, or sorry, British, uh the Beaverton School District. Officials both in this venue and other venues, they have falling. They have falling enrollments at a, at a number of schools. So I would imagine they'd look to route to current buildings before. Doing new ones. So it's, it's even more important to keep those, keep those spaces in.
Um I think I, I would like to weigh in and say that I agree with what a lot of our, my fellow commissioners are saying in terms of keeping. Um that park and not eliminating it. I think it is important to understand that. These aren't large parks. Um the acreage that you're talking about is not particularly big, you know, a. Full sized soccer field's about an acre and a half all on its own. So, you know, they. We're not talking about really large parks and, and within that area while those two may. In a plan view map appear very close together, given the density and the number of people who are in that area having to. Park spaces um that potentially could provide uh complimentary amenities for people, you know, they aren't. Duplicates of one another, they might provide slightly different things and slightly different choices. Would make a lot of sense in an area where you have a high density of in, you know. Living in that area. So um I think it's really important to keep both of them. Um I did want to come back to the sort of, the last thing that you put in about changing some of these boundaries. Um and I guess. For some of the park spaces, you know, like to this one, yeah. Uh I guess one of the questions that I have is. In the. First, the, the image on the far, sorry, I don't know the names of these parks. The image on the far left versus the middle image. Um on the image on the far left, you're saying you want to bring the. Line down so it's not in the overlay, which I first question. Why would it be a challenge to be in the overlay? You said because it would have this natural edge and I'm not sure that's necessarily a problem. To have a natural edge within a park. Um and then in the second one, you're saying you're increasing it to making it three acres, but that puts it into the overlay, which is sort of counter to. The argument on the first one. Am I reading that correctly?
Uh yeah, so like, thank you for pointing this out. I get to explain it a little bit better. Um. And uh good point on the other one. So the first one is the community park and. The reason that we're thinking about shifting that is because that. Green geography is thirteen plus acres. But we think we're only going to get eight and a half acres of that area as open space. So um for recreation purposes, it wouldn't be ideal if. The applicants or the property owners and developers decided to put a bunch of the. The community park acreage in the resource overlay because we already don't, we're already not getting as much community park as we'd hoped. So we're trying to focus that eight point five acres in the. Non-resource overlay section to make, make sure it's all developable. What we get is developable. Um the, the resource overlay protections are still going to apply. So that's, that uh. That resource overlay like stretch will be largely intact. Um yeah, even if the land around it is developed. So I didn't explain that well. On the other side, the other side is more illustrious. The, because it's the. You're right, like putting it in the overlay is going to be counterproductive because we're not going to get additional uh active recreation space. Which is like the point I was just making. So we, we need to do a. Build with those lines to make sure that it's usable. And that's not the right line. So I appreciate your comments on that.
Okay, and thank you for the explanation. I now understand what you were trying to get. Park. So thank you very much. Um. I. I do have a little bit of heartburn about some of the things that, you know, I appreciate um. With some of the code changes, you're suggesting that the parks and opens. The dedicated park area has to be first within the kind of park overlay so that you can try to. Make things remain contiguous and kind of create a big enough park to actually have an amenity. I do have some heartburn about um. The idea that that fifteen percent of open space, if it's not within that park overlay. Could be the kind of open space that we see with a lot of the development in the area, which is. Slightly, I mean, it's really unusable open space. Um a lot of times it becomes long skinny spaces. Things like that that aren't really the same as creating a park and a, and recreation area. Um I, I don't know what the answer is and understand that you're kind of trying to respond to this um. You know, new information. Um but it just seems like unless you can protect it within that park's overlay. You're not really getting the same thing when it comes to open space. Um. Is that?
Yeah, Chair McCann, um. I believe you're talking about. Uh any open space requirement that would occur outside the parks overlay.
Right, exactly.
So those spaces. Is there that part of it, if you happen to have resource overlay on your property, you can put it in there. The, so let me back up once again. The, the idea, the basic structural idea is that. We are focusing on the parks overlay pieces and that is going to provide the recreational opportunities for the, the plan area. And then we have other goals that we're trying to meet with the open space requirement outside the parks overlay. Number one is if you have resource overlay on your property. That resource overlay geography is pretty significant. So putting your open space in there is fine because it's meeting our natural resources goals.
Mm hmm.
Um now, if it's not in the parks overlay or the resource overlay and it's just undevelopable property. Um the emphasis shifted to our canopy goal. So it was a, you know, set aside some space, make sure that's fifty percent tree canopy. And that's going to help us get to our forty percent tree canopy goal for. The Cougar Mountain area outside the nature park. Um so it's, it's a really more of a flexible, as long as you have canopy, then you can. Kind of put it where you'd like and like put whatever programming or stuff in there that you want to. Um it was the canopy that was the focus of that. Land.
Okay, yeah, um. Canopy is great, um but it, it is going to be a big shift for this area and it is still. Not speaking to creating um pervious surfaces and kind of open space for other things. Um so I think. I don't know. I, I, I like to see more contiguous open space. It's more beneficial from an environmental and standpoint as well as recreation. So. Are there other questions uh for staff? Commissioner Ellis.
Uh sorry, Brian, just to go back on the, the constitutional taking aspect of it, the um. The, who does, who does the risk fall on in, in the, in, in the old. Paradigm setting aside for THPRD versus the suggested paradigm. Does the risk fall in the city? For, for reserving that as a, for, for THPRD as a first right? Is that where it is?
Uh Commissioner Ellis, I, I'll go ahead and take that. I'll take that question. Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. So yes, because what would be triggering it is our code regulation. So by, by requiring. Uh that the property owner dedicated through, through our zoning code, that's what triggers that taking. Uh the, the constitutional taking without just compensation. So um. At some point in the future, when THPRD wants to purchase the property or, you know, they can, they can purchase it. For just compensation or negotiate something with the landowner at that point. It's if it's already designated as open space, we're basically providing all the incentives and it's already going to be developed. It's going to have park amenities. We're providing all of the incentives for a landowner to go ahead and dedicate this property, which they won't be able to develop on. Anyway, but if we were to require the property owner to dedicate it, that, that's where we, we, the city. Um get the risk, we get the legal risk.
Gotcha, okay. And, and I know this is probably way out of line here, but. Is, are there no mitigation options that the city is comfortable with? For instance. For instance, then this is a bad example, but like helping THPRD pay a premium or something for these parcels when they, when they go to. When they go to buy them.
Are you, um are you talking about like contributing, assisting with the purchase of the, of the property?
Right, yeah, because I, I assume that the risk goes down as the, as, as the compensation appears either more favorable or, or above market or whatever. To, to whoever's selling it. So, so I don't, I don't know if there's any acceptable mitigations at the city level that would be worth keeping. This, keeping the THPRD mandate in place.
Um so, so you're saying if we were to, to con- continue to require the dedication. How we, how the city can mitigate that by offering money at this stage through the zoning process?
Yeah, yeah. And, 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 and very sorry, like this, this is a, a layperson's view on it, but, but, but in my, in my company or in my world. If I wanted to do something dangerous, my first question would be how much money gets me out of danger? And so, so, so maybe that's the question is, is there an acceptable position at the city level that says? That says, you know, we, we can keep this mandate. I, I believe it's beneficial. I thi- I think it's a, it's a good thing at the community level. Um but we have, we have ways to de-risk ourselves. I, I don't know if that conversation has happened at the city.
So that would be, that wouldn't be within my purview to make that, that kind of a decision, but I just say that there's nothing preventing THPRD. From purchasing the property. We don't have to zone it and require dedication uh in order for that property to be, be available for purchase.
Right.
And THPRD has said they, they want to purchase it for, you know, market value um in their, in their testimony. So. You know, we're not, we're not preventing that. We're just preventing ourselves from taking the property, the city.
Right, right.
Are there any other questions, commissioners? Sounds, sounds like not. So we can move on to the public testimony. So now is time for public comments on the Cougar Mountain Community Plan Development Code updates related to parks and open space. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Um. The uh commission calls Mimi Dukas. Um please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering. Here on behalf of three different property owners. Um we represent the Sparks family. Uh which is located on Tile Flat Road uh where the community park is shown. We represent the Kobes, which is the large parcel of land south of Cooper Mountain Nature Park. And that land extends to the southern uh boundary of the planning area. So it is in fact a very large piece of land. And we also represent Five Oaks Partnership, which is up at the uh one seventy fifth Cammer Roundabout. Um where the uh purple area is shown. Um appreciate staff's efforts on this. Um first and foremost, we appreciate acknowledgement of the constitutional. Struggles with the code as it was originally written. Uh we've been raising concerns about uh a single buyer requirement. Um I think that falls under what's being described as a constitutional problem. So um appreciate that that's been recognized. Um in terms of council's direction that there's too much parkland in this area. That is a direct um correlation to the Kobe property. So the Kobe family is in conversations with. Regional partners about the potential to expand the Cooper Mountain Nature Park. That's a, that's complicated conversation. We don't know if it will reach fruition. But the Kobe property could be um. Could be uh planned with a very large expansion to the Cooper Mountain Nature Park. And then on top of that. That is shown with two neighborhood parks in their land as well. So three parks in an area that's being described as overparked by your city council. I think you need to look at the Kobe property and see if both of those neighborhood parks are in fact needed. If the uh metro THPRD regional partner uh expansion of the Cooper Mountain Nature Park is achieved. Uh that would create a very parked central area to this planning district. And um putting two additional parks on Kobe property seems rather excessive. So. Um I think that's an important consideration. Um in terms of the park overlay process. Um we continue to say that the land use review process for these um overlay areas. Needs to be more flexible, um and the easier level of review to modify the boundaries of these park. Blobs that are shown on the map. There's an awful lot of site constraints and site planning um decisions that need to happen. And the chances that those lines as drawn by staff being the right exact configuration for those future parks. Is probably pretty low. Um general location, we understand, general size, we understand. But we need more flexibility on jiggering out the, the edges. Um being able to achieve the acreage and general location, but maybe moving things around, changing the shape of it. Um shouldn't be subject to a type three review. Uh as I've said before, the more regulation and the more process you put on to Cooper Mountain. The more expensive the end homes will end up being. Um. I've got some more comments about the tree canopy stuff, but I'll save that until you're done with the staff presentation on that portion. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh do commissioners have any questions of the speaker?
Uh just a real fast one. Um you mentioned the, the complicated process for the. Potential expansion of Cooper Mountain, Cooper Mountain Nature Park. Any, any possible timeline horizon on, on when, when we think that would have effect or we know, you know, potential future boundaries?
No, that's all very much confidential real estate conversations.
Cool, that's what I figured. Thank you.
Any other questions from commission members?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Um I see a raised hand from Aisha Panis.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Aisha Panis with Twelton Hills Park and Recreation District. One five seven oh seven Southwest Walker Road, Beaverton, Oregon nine seven zero zero six. Good evening, Chair McCann and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the park overlay. Uh I am the Deputy General Manager for Twelton Hills Park and Recreation District and the district staff has been collaborating with. Your city staff for several years now and we truly do appreciate the partnership. and uh the district staff has been collaborating with your city staff for several years now, and we truly do appreciate the partnership on this project. Tonight, I'd like to clarify just a few park-related items that have recently changed in the proposed plan, including the proposal to remove the Skyline Neighborhood Park and to eliminate the requirement that parkland be dedicated as public open space. I'd like to point out also that we do have other staff from the Park District here tonight to answer any questions you have about how park levels of service are determined, why an increased nature park should not correlate to fewer neighborhood parks, and how the Park District approaches land acquisition for parks, trails, and natural areas. As identified in the urban service agreement between our agencies, THPRD is the city of Beaverton's park provider, and in that capacity, we request that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council to retain Skyline Park and allow THPRD and the city's attorney to work together to draft code language that achieves the desired park, trail, and open space network in Cooper Mountain. This request will allow THPRD to meet the planned level of service and to meet the city of Beaverton's goals identified in the community plan, as well as the city's Comprehensive Plan Section five point eight, which acknowledges us as the primary park provider, recognizes parks and recreation as basic and essential for the health and welfare of the community, and supports and encourages acquisition of park and recreation sites in advance of need so that most appropriate sites are available to uh provide for these vital public facilities. To begin, I'd like to address the removal of parks, specifically the Skyline Neighborhood Park. Uh, the Skyline and McKernan neighborhoods are bounded by steep topography, planned busy roads, and natural resources such as ravines and streams, which create barriers to walkable access to parks and recreation. Removing Skyline Park or any other park would leave a neighborhood underserved or possibly with no service in an area that includes multifamily apartments and middle housing that more significantly rely on nearby park and recreation facilities. Given those planned roadways, the Skyline area would be left without access to a neighborhood park that because that park would be removed. We suggest relocating the park or reducing its size to a pocket park, which are both alternative options that the Park District would be happy to discuss further. On the topic of not requiring dedication of public open space, we recognize the challenge challenges that the city faces uh in order to require that land dedication. Uh, we do note that the planned code changes suggest an overall decrease of six acres of parkland, which is equivalent to about three neighborhood parks. Um, as Brian noted in his presentation earlier, the impact of that reduction wasn't known to the city council when they had their July eighteenth work session, and it's our belief that that reduction in open space meets the city council's intent to in to decrease the park acreage without removing any specific park. Also of concern to us is the privatizing of parks in Cooper Mountain. Private parks provide services within a development, but will exclude the community at large, which is an approach that we don't find consistent with the city's comp plan or our um shared interest in that community plan. While we do stand ready to collaborate on the potential adjustment of future park locations, removing additional parks would deplete park and recreation services available to the community. Therefore, we request that the Planning Commission recommend retaining Skyline Park and all of the other identified parks you've seen within their identified neighborhood locations to ensure that parks are equitably distributed throughout Cooper Mountain and that they meet THPRD's level of service threshold. Uh, we understand also that there are questions about THPRD's approach to acquiring parkland, and I'd like to share that we have worked closely with developers both in North Bethany and South Cooper Mountain to acquire parkland. Our approach has been very successful, in part due to our um our method of valuing the land not as open space, but instead using the value of that underlying land use or zoning designation to ensure that property owners are fairly compensated. We expect that Cooper Mountain will be annexed into THPRD, and we are financially prepared to acquire both park and trail land consistent with the community plan that we've um seen tonight. We do ask that uh THPRD's legal counsel work with the city attorney to establish possible incentives in the code that would encourage parks to remain publicly accessible and to not reduce the amount of park space identified in the overlay plan by more than that six acres that are currently proposed. As your parks partner, we are eager to continue the collaboration and discuss how we can best provide future parks and trails that meet the level of service standards that are required to adequately serve Cooper Mountain. I appreciate your time, and we look forward to continuing our partnership. Um, as I mentioned, we do have a few staff here who are available to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have any questions of the speaker? It's like not at this time. Thank you very much. So the Commission calls Wendy Kroger to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Kroger. My address is one two zero three zero Southwest Settler Way in Beaverton, nine seven zero zero eight. Um, I'm here this evening as an individual uh citizen and also a member of the Friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park. Uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening regarding the Cooper Mountain Community Plan Park Overlay Plan Map and the current requirement that parks overlay land be dedicated as public open space. This testimony amplifies our previously submitted written comments. First, it is unclear to us why any city councillor would want to eliminate certain parks within its newest planned community, especially given that the council would then need to explain to future impacted residents why their particular neighborhood was singled out to be parkless. Regarding item A of the staff report, we strongly urge the city to retain the currently proposed Park Overlay Plan Map with no changes. The public has given extensive input to the plan over the past three years and is unwilling to have any neighborhood parks removed from it. And we thank uh Commissioner Ellis for his comments about uh recognizing it's a little hard to get across streams, hundred and seventy-fifth ravines, and that sort of thing. Um, if any of the parks of and their location on the proposed plan map are moved or worse, removed, there will be new neighborhoods within the Cooper Mountain Community Plan that are either underserved or with no neighborhood park amenities at all. Regarding item B of the staff report, the proposed code changes would eliminate the requirement that parks overlay property be dedicated as public open space, paving the way for the privatization of open space on Cooper Mountain. Beaverton, please must assure that THPRD can secure usable sites for active and passive activities for all community members, not just have the Cooper Mountain Community Plan serve up private parks for a selected few. Eliminating the requirement that parks overlay land be dedicated as public open space will deleteriously limit THPRD's ability to provide adequate public parks, trails, and recreation services on Cooper Mountain. This approach directly conflicts with the intent of the CMCP and Section five point eight of Beaverton's Comprehensive Plan. THPRD publicly acknowledges that it is financially prepared to acquire such land dedications as the Cooper Mountain Plan is implemented and urges the Planning Commission to recommend incentives in the code to encourage parks to remain publicly accessible. Such incentives should in no way reduce the amount of park acreage on the Parks Overlay Plan Map, in our opinion. The Friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park strongly supports THPRD testimony on this matter and asks that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council that the city attorney's office work closely with THPRD's legal counsel to draft code language that will resolve these concerns as well as any other issues regarding takings. Most municipalities do not have the luxury of a nationally accredited park and recreation agency offering professional and proven parks and recreation expertise as a partner. Beaverton does. Please use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, uh, do you have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you, Wendy. It appears that that is the last of our public comment on this section. Um, Commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions before we move on to the next section? No, all right, so now, um, oh, Commission, we do have one. Um, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Chair McCann. Uh, I would like to support keeping the Skyline Park as well, or any of the parks that are in high-density areas. I just think it's something that Beaverton's always done, and it should remain in force.
Thank you. So um, let's move on to part two. Um, we'll now begin with the staff presentation uh presented by Senior Planner Rob Zoller and Associate Planner S- I'm sorry. Sir- Siralee, am I?
Saralee.
Saralee, I'm gonna get it. Um, Hickson for part two, landslide hazards and tree applications, and welcome to the team, by the way.
Thank you. So um, my name is Saralee Hickson, and I am the new associate planner here. And um, I'm here today to talk to you about the approach to um landslide hazards and and how to mitigate those risks um on Cooper Mountain. The draft map and code are part of your packet tonight. Um, the state um maintains landslide susceptibility maps based on best available science and does a lot of that science. Um, and those maps are available to jurisdictions to use to um address um landslide risk. Landslide susceptibility is um how often or how likely it is to happen. Landslide risk is and how likely the consequences are to be bad. Um, so what uh the state says this is where it's likely to happen. Um, and then we go to, how do we mitigate the risk? How do we make it less bad when it does happen? Um, generally speaking, um, commercial building code and engineering and the engineering codes for public facilities, um, already require that geotechnical work be done and geotechnical review be done, but there are certain types of development, including residential land divisions, that don't have that requirement built into city code. Um, this, the code for Cooper will um fill in that gap. So we used Agami's data, um, which is a beautiful map, but not particularly usable for development purposes um to create an overlay where which are areas where um, generally speaking, there are areas where either a landslide has already happened, and once it's a landslide, it's more likely to move, or where a landslide is likely to happen based on um soils, geology, those kinds of things. Um, what we are requiring with the proposed code is that um, the risk be reviewed and any mitigation, so any special ways that you need to build, any special areas you need to avoid, be reviewed at the time of the land division. Um, and it will depend on the type, on the intensity of the land division, on the intensity of the development, um, what the review type will be. Um, so for any given site that contains risk area, um, a landslide review would be done with the land division. If they're proposing three lots and no onsite stormwater infiltration, then they can go straight to a geotechnical certification where um a geotech- a qualified geotechnical specialist can say, hey, what you're proposing here is not going to have an impact. Um, and that cert- that certification will be enough. We'll just accept it, move on. Um, if they're proposing four lots or proposing infiltration, onsite infiltration, more water means more susceptibility to landslides, then um a little bit more work will be required. So either geological assessment, um, which indicates that there's no risk, so um certified engineering geologist looks at it, says, yeah, this is fine. It's the the data that we have is really cost-grained, the data that you have is really good, we're we're good to go here. Um, or um a geotechnical engineer comes on board and says, there is some risk here. Here's how we can mitigate that risk. Um, that would produce a report with recommendations, and those recommendations could be moved into conditions of approval for the land division so that those things um carry forward with the development and with the building of the homes. So it's a pretty simple process. Um, it just means that qualified professionals are looking at something. Um, generally speaking, these requirements are actually consistent with the standard of care and normal engineering processes. Developers are probably already getting this work done. Um, what we're doing is making sure that the work is done and looking at that um to to like do a quality control check on the work that's being done. So we're just codifying the typical process and allowing us to look at documents that we wouldn't always get. So um, that's it. Thank you, and over to Rob for trees.
You're Saralee. That brings us, yes, to the draft tree code for Cooper Mountain, which aims to preserve existing trees, expand the tree canopy to reach a forty percent tree canopy target in the plan area outside the nature park, and provide some development flexibility on sites with a lot of trees. At work sessions this past winter and spring, we discussed how the draft code could accomplish these goals by focusing on standards and guidelines in Chapter sixty. Tonight, we will focus specifically on tree applications in Chapter forty, which are described in Attachment A in your packet. In Chapter sixty, some provisions such as rules for preserving trees and enhancing canopy generally apply at initial development. Initial development refers to the first application for design review or a preliminary partition or preliminary subdivision excluding large lot land divisions. We'll review this material on slides nineteen through twenty-one. Other tree removal rules apply after initial development. We'll review this material on slides twenty-two through twenty-eight. The rules for minimum tree preservation that applied initial development are described in Chapter sixty-sixty-one, which the Planning Commission reviewed at work sessions on February seventh and May fifteenth. There are no major updates to these sections. As a reminder, within the resource overlay, sixty-five percent of existing tree canopy must be preserved. Outside the overlay, forty percent of existing tree canopy must be preserved. The draft code also includes minimum tree canopy standards, which focus on assuring the site has sufficient tree canopy either now or in the future. This can be achieved using tree preservation, tree planting, or a combination of preservation and planting. Inside the resource overlay, the draft code requires sixty-five percent tree canopy. In addition to the standards, the draft code includes discretionary processes to address alternative approaches to meeting minimum tree preservation and tree canopy goals. At initial development, also middles will require a tree application in addition to other development-related applications that may be required. These three tree plan applications can be used to demonstrate compliance with minimum tree preservation and tree canopy rules. The Cooper Mountain Tree Plan One application provides a clear and objective path to meeting tree-related standards, whereas the Tree Plan Two and Tree Plan Three provide discretionary pathways. For Tree Plan One and Tree Plan Two applications, the decision-making authority is staff when the application is a standalone application. However, if either application is bundled with other applications that require a high review, such as a planned unit development, then the Planning Commission will also review the Tree Plan One and Tree Plan Two applications. For a Tree Plan Three application, the decision-making authority is the Planning Commission, even when the application is a standalone application. This application allows the applicant to meet a lower tree canopy target across the site if the project offers additional benefits, such as a large open space that restores habitat or adds to the local food supply. For all three applications, even after the initial tree plan application has been approved, a property owner may submit a new application if the tree preservation or tree canopy plan needs to be changed, such as if tree health declined significantly or the species to be planted needs to be changed during construction, which is likely to occur during multi-year and multi-phase development projects. These applications can be used throughout the development process up until the site receives issuance of final occupancy or acceptance of final inspection. That concludes a review of the three types of tree plan applications that will show up in proposals for the initial development of a site. Now I would like to talk about tree removal applications which apply outside of initial development. This approach to regulating tree removal is new for the city and only applies inside the Cooper Mountain Plan Area. The intention goes back to the goal of achieving and maintaining forty percent tree canopy in the plan area. The draft code allows some tree removal while adding replanting or fee in lieu of replanting so that some sites can change while still meeting the forty percent tree canopy goal. These rules could apply to the existing property owner choosing not to develop their site or the new property owner who moves into the neighborhood after the project is complete and would like to remove some trees on their property. Before I walk through scenarios that describe when a tree removal application would be required in Cooper Mountain, I'd like to take a moment to discuss how tree removal currently works at the city for I'd like to take a moment to discuss how tree removal currently works at the city for most residential lots. On lots greater than a half acre, all trees up to ten inches DBH, that's diameter at breast height. And up to four trees, ten inches DBH or greater can be removed per year. On a lot that is half acre or less, all trees can be removed. No application is required for either scenario, no replanting is required. In short, it is pretty easy to remove most trees on residential lots in Beaverton. In Cooper Mountain, tree removal rules will look different. This is partly because of the vast natural resources in the plan area, as well as council policy direction and public engagement feedback to preserve trees and enhance natural resources. Generally, the same set of tree removal rules will apply to all lots regardless of what type of building is on the lot. On small lots, some trees can be removed without a permit, but on most lots, healthy trees six inches DBH or greater will require an application for tree removal. The Type One application provides a clear and objective pathway, the Type Two application provides a discretionary pathway. More Type Two applications also means that more neighbors will receive notices and can appeal staff decisions. Also replanting or paying a fee in lieu of replanting is required depending upon the application. Now I'll walk through three scenarios that describe when an application might be required. On a lot under thirty-five hundred square feet with a single detached dwelling or middle housing. Any tree could be removed without a permit. In addition, any tree less than six inches DBH can also be removed without a permit. The Cooper Mountain Tree Removal One application allows a property owner to request permission to remove dead trees and hazardous trees. Or a limited number of trees of six inches DBH or larger based on lot size per calendar year. This is a Type One application, therefore it is clear and objective. For every six inches of DBH removed, one new tree shall be planted. Fee in lieu of replanting is not allowed with a Type One application. With this application, property owners will have to come to the city more often to request tree removal. But with that in mind, we tried to capture as many reasonable scenarios as we could through Type One applications. To reduce the time and expense associated with each tree removal application. The Tree Removal Two application allows a property owner to submit an application to remove more than the limited number of trees in the Tree Removal One application. This is a Type Two, therefore it is discretionary. Discretionary option provides more flexibility by allowing applicants to propose an alternative approach that still meets the intent of tree-related policies. But in doing so, the applicant still needs to demonstrate why tree removal is necessary in their application to the city. There are two major differences between the Type One and Type Two applications. First, the applicant can choose to replant trees consistent with code requirements. Pay a fee in lieu of replanting if justified and approved by the city arborist, or a combination of both. And second, public notice is required, which increases the likelihood that the applicant or a neighbor can appeal the staff decision. In terms of tree replanting, the code includes new tree replacement standards that apply to properties in Cooper Mountain only. They include requirements such as for every six inches of DBH removed, one replacement tree shall be planted. For every tree removed, the replacement tree shall be capable of achieving the same or greater mature tree canopy area as the removed tree. And last, replacement trees shall, shall be planted on the subject property or site. That brings us to the second part of the discussion. Are questions or do you have questions or comments related to the drop landslide code? Do you have questions or comments related to the tree code applications that establish thresholds and approval criteria associated with the initial development of a site? As well as thresholds for tree removal outside of initial development. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have, someone have questions? Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Um, so the fee in lieu, I'm wondering how that will be calculated because I'm thinking that um. Potentially developers will want to take down a large number of trees in order to fit, you know, a sizable development on the property. Is the fee in lieu going to be based on, well, how will it be calculated? What it'll be based on?
Um, the code establishes that it would be based on canopy, so it's looking at the area, the combined area of the trees. Um, that would be removed. So if you removed one large tree, it's possible it might take, you know, several smaller trees to um, replace that canopy. The actual fee schedule is, would be outside of the code. That would be approved um, through resolution, uh, through resolution during implementation.
Um, Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, I had no question.
Okay. Can you put your hand down? Commissioner Ellis?
Uh, yeah, on the, on the landslide uh, content, uh, maybe a couple of quick questions. Is, is the Cooper Mountain area the first like truly weird troublesome landslide prone area that the city of Beaverton has had to develop code in or for?
Um, it's the first greenfield area with that. Um, there are areas that of um, Beaverton that are shown on the Dagami maps, but they have been developed for a very long time since before Dagami did any mapping. So this is the first greenfield um, area with it, so.
Gotcha. Okay, cool. And, and, and the real question behind that, um, i- i- if you don't have any information on that, on this, this is super okay, I'm just curious. There's a lot of areas around the country where insurance providers are, are ducking out. Um, be it Florida for hurricanes, California for um, uh, drought and earthquake and so on and so forth. Um, we have seismic risks here in our neck of the woods as well. Does the city work with uh, any input from insurance providers or any? Or does any information get sent to insurance providers in the region to help inform the level of seriousness or the level of depth that we go with our codes for things like this?
Fabulous question. Um, and the short answer is no. The slightly longer answer is when Dagami puts out their new study, so what they do is they do um. They collect new data, they do new modeling, um, they use what they have learned from the last set of landslides, because there's always a last set of landslides. To make better data and it's really the Dagami maps that are the ones that um. It is my understanding, the ones that insurance companies, if they were looking, would use because they have. It's much easier to figure out insurance rates based on a bigger area than the small ones. Um, so what we do doesn't really have much impact as far as I am aware. Um. I, I know about flood insurance, I don't know much about landslide insurance.
Okay, cool. It was more a curiosity question, so I appreciate that.
Commissioner Lawler.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus on the landslide as well. Um, it sounds as if, or, or I'm, I'm picking up anyway from the way the code language has been developed that primarily the landslide hazard. The, the activity that prompts a landslide is water and it's, sounds like infiltration. And so is there basically only one type of landslide risk that we're, that have been identified in this area?
Another really great question. I'm enjoying these. And so um. I will say that the type of landslide that we're looking at is what I would refer to as a weather-related landslide. Um. There are landslides that are related to seismic activity and they are not taken into account here. Um, what the inputs that go into this are um. Soils and the geology underneath it, um, which is how does water, how does water move? Um, and also, um, the rapidly moving landslide um, risk. Um, which is which other one? There's different types of landslide, those are the two different types that this, that the data that we have for this area maps. So. Um, soils and geology and then the, the other one which is more to do with slopes, so the rapidly moving ones tend to be along um, on really, really steeply sloped areas where things can just take off and move very, very quickly. And the state requirements for um, landslide risk assessments actually came about after a series of those in the nineties.
So it, excuse me, it seems like there would be some very building-specific requirements that I'm assuming these reports will specify, but there's also probably going to be some development-related, like stormwater management and those kind of uh, thing, because we're, we're talking about a fairly large area, if I remember, recall your map on the east end. A fairly large area, which means a development itself will be influenced by, um, yeah, that big orange blob over there. Uh, yeah, so, so I'm assuming that the, the understanding is that the this requirement for a ge- geologic report will speak to both the more, more general development-related concerns and mitigation factors as well as individual construction? Am I, am I correct in my assumption?
Usually. So in my experience, when we've got these reports, they um, they say this. Um, as long as you build in, with these particular kinds of foundations, with these particular kinds of retaining walls, with these particular kinds of blah, 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 as long as you build with, under those general circumstances, um, this should be fine. There are also, I have also seen them say. But for this particular lot, we need you to do more work before you figure it out. Um, so those would be generally, they're like, yeah, most of this area is totally fine. Um, these three lots, those ones will need to, those ones will need to be looked at um, when there's a specific house design. And, and that can be made a condition of approval too. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm thinking about the big picture and then I'm also thinking about the individual. And then I'm thinking about the long term. Um, I'm thinking back, I've been here long enough that I remember in the West Hills. When a neighbor merely changed the irrigation practices on their property. Caused an adjoining house to slide down the hill and smash into another house. So I mean that, I guess I'm just thinking that there may be responsibilities all the way down and including into the future with, and maybe some notification to the property owners of those lots, especially if they've been identified in this report that will get buried in a subdivision application. Um, I would hope that the future landowners A would know, be notified of that, so they know that there's going to be some specific uh, design requirements. And that long term, that there's going to be some uh, maybe some practices or something that they need to adhere to. To ensure that they don't influence themselves or their neighbors. With the, you know, which would be considered normal practice, homeowner practices irrigating their lawn, for example. Any, any thoughts to, to uh, how, how far down the road that you may want to uh, take this?
Um. Yes and no. So I um, I agree with you completely. Um, the there are jurisdictions that have much more detailed information about um, their landslide susceptibility. Um, Portland, for example, recently um, just changed their landslide code to um. To take into account new incredibly detailed um, information that they got about lots of different types of landslides. And, and their code is much more prescriptive, it is much more, you can disturb this amount of area, you can't do this kind of thing, you can do this. Their code is much more on that level because they have that level of detail. We do not have that level of detail, it doesn't exist for um, most of the city of Beaverton. A little bit, there's a little bit of the north and there's a little bit of the south, but most of the city does not have that level of detail. So we're not in a place where we can um, where we can put in those kinds of regulations. That does not mean that if that data came into place, those things could be done. Um, the conditions that go with the land divisions are the ones that the, the ones that the um, that, that come from the geotechnical report, those will run with the land. So um, anytime that development is, so somebody buys a property and um. They are, um, they go to build on it. This, the city will look, will look at those conditions that went from the geotechnical report and pass them on, they will go to the builder, uh, the builder should pass them on to the homeowner. Whether they do or not is not up to us, but it will be part of the review. Um, so that's where we are right now.
Okay, that's um. Well, at least we're doing something. So that's, I guess, something is better than nothing, but it really should be in the, the building code. I totally believe that this kind of stuff should be in the state building code, but that's just my opinion. Okay, thank you.
The best commercial code has it, just not residential.
Exactly, that's why they need it for the residential code too. And, thanks.
Um, while we're on landslides, um, I, I had a question, um, just, or maybe a clarification. Does, I know you had in there kind of different development, um, there was some acknowledgement that um, maybe some sites might choose to infiltrate uh, stormwater onsite. Uh, I guess my question is in these landslide-prone areas, does the code still prioritize onsite infiltration? Or is it written such that it's actually um, does not prioritize that because it is, it is such a major contributor to earth movement?
Really great question. You guys are good. Um, and um. I know that since the majority of stormwater code is held within the engineering design manual. Modifications can be made based on exact sites. So um, it, it is my assumption that those kinds of modifications can be made in these areas. This is new and, and we have been talking to um, site development about it. Um, and I don't know, but we'll definitely think about it before you get final code. How about that for an answer?
Sounds great. Um, while you're thinking about it, I guess my other question with that is, you know, to your comment that you don't have a ton, the city doesn't have a ton of information about these specific areas and exactly what's going on through a lot of the city. Um, is, is there an opportunity, maybe as sites get developed, that the city would be able to start to you know, install monitoring sites and things like that? I know the city of Portland has quite a few of them. Um, a lot of the historic landslides in the city of Portland, they do continue to move. It's not true that they move, they slide once and then they stay still, they do not. Um, so um, you know, I think, you know, is that something the city is talking about doing? So you get better information about what's going on out here? And obviously, safety is a big deal and, and we all know that there have been some pretty big tragedies around the country with regard to landslides and residential zones.
Um. Great questions. Um. At this point, we have not been thinking about um. Monitoring sites. Um, there. The. The, there was actually a con, there was actually a large group of cities, not just Portland, but also East County. Got mu- got that really high-quality data um, through a federal emergency management grant. Um, so a FEMA grant um, paid for Dagami to do the flights, the studies, the soil testing, the everything else is to get those. Um, and I know that there are opportunities for um, those big regional things to um, be done. Um, and I think that it is more likely that that kind of thing could be done well than city do, the city doing monitoring here, because we don't have geotechnical engineers on staff. Um, city of Portland has Um, city of Portland has a lot. Um, they have geotechnical engineers that work with the building code, and then they also have geotechnical engineers that um do nothing but like the big picture planning. Um, and we just don't have anybody qualified to do that. As we go through and do um infrastructure projects, um so like looking at where we're gonna put um new water towers, uh reservoirs, those kinds of things, we definitely do get high quality information then. Um, because we do the same geotechnical reports that we request everybody else to do and possibly at a slightly higher level. Um, so.
Sure, I wanna, sorry, sorry, Chair, I wanted to uh, I wanted to chime in really quick. We'll, we'll check on the in-house expertise too, just to make sure um we're not missing something about, we don't have a hidden geotech in the, in the, in the city. But I think overall, I, we really appreciate the questions and they're very thoughtful and insightful. And I think it's just showing that um, you know, as we, as Sarley mentioned before, like this is a new area and we saw this map and we thought, well, we have to do something about this. So, so this is on everybody's radar as these sites develop. But it's not necessarily something the city has really dug into in detail. Um, is site developments thinking about it when it comes up for them, buildings thinking about it when it comes up for them? There's not really like a program. So these are all really good things that like would be a separate project from Cooper that we would have to do uh in the future to kind of get those things in line. Uh, but I've learned a ton from Sarley and from your questions tonight, so I really appreciate it.
All right, are there any other questions? I don't think so. Okay, so let's move on to public testimony. So now is the time for public comments on the Cooper Mountain Community Plan Development Code Updates related to landslide hazards and tree applications. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. The commission calls Mimi Dukas to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening again. Um, Mimi Dukas with ICS Engineering, still representing the Sparks, the Kobe's and Five Oaks Partnership. Um, my primary comment is about the tree canopy standards. Um, the uh development goal of forty percent tree canopy is a very high standard. Um, so I would encourage you to look at uh case examples for what forty percent actually looks like uh in the field. Um, what you end up with are trees planted with initial development in backyards. Um, that buyers may or may not want. Not everybody wants trees in their backyard. Um, and so you're taking their choice away. What is also very important for that tree canopy goal is to allow street trees to count towards that forty percent. Uh, the draft section sixty dot sixty one dot thirty dot one dot eight dot three specifically says the street trees do not count towards the canopy standard. When you put in public streets, that is a very substantial impervious area um that helps to achieve that tree canopy standard. I, I'm not sure how you even meet a forty percent standard when you don't include the street trees. Um, when you've got streets and you've got homes, there's not much land left to meet the tree canopy standard if you're not allowing street trees to count towards it. So that's a very important change that needs to happen to the code. Um, but um generally speaking, I'd like to see if you've done um site studies for how you can achieve the forty percent standard without using street trees and what that looks like. Um, my other comments are more side notes and personal comments. Um, in terms of the tree code that applies to existing homes, uh I personally live in the city of Portland. Their tree code is um punitive for how you can manage your own home and lot. Um, it, it makes it very expensive to remove trees. You end up keeping unhealthy trees. Um, I've had arborists trim large trees in my yard and because we're only allowed to cut four inch caliper at the most, I end up with just a bizarre tree trimming code. Um, and when we had the windstorm recently, there were huge safety implications for people who tried to remove trees. It's very expensive to remove trees. You don't have space to mitigate for them. There's a lot of unintended consequences to regulating trees on individual residential lots. So that's just my personal side note. Um, and then another side note relative to the landslide provisions. Um, any residential development is required to do a geotechnical report. Um, at least with construction documents to make sure that your uh street pavement standards meet uh city public work standards. So geotechnical reports are very standard operating procedure. Um, with the landslide area, I think we submit the geotech report with land use, which is fine. Um, but there's a lot of safety factors going on. I don't think um we need to worry too much about the landslides because there's already a lot of safety factors built into procedures for making public improvements for subdivisions. So just wanna give you some reassurance of that. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, does anyone have any questions with the speaker? Commissioner Ellis.
Uh, and sorry, did not, it's just responding to a comment the speaker made uh about the, the tree cover and, and street tree is not counting. Um, uh, does one of our staff members potentially have the background on, on why that decision was made, on why it's forty percent aside or, or plus street trees?
Yes, uh, I can take that one. Uh, sometimes it's kind of hard to tell the story of how we come up with these numbers because there are a lot of numbers used in a lot of different places. Um, generally, the, we, we reached that forty percent canopy goal through two main moves. One is the resource overlay. Um, that does a lot of the heavy lifting land that would already be set aside in a um, a tractor easement according to the resource overlay code. And we do count um street trees towards that canopy, uh that canopy goal. Um, I have to look at the exact reference. There are, there are moments where it doesn't count towards, you know, smaller calculations. But does it account towards the forty, forty degree canopy goal for the whole plan area? Yes, it does. And, and, and Mimi's right, it's, it's substantial. We've studied it. We've looked at uh site studies with all kinds of conditions. We've, we've looked at um the impact of expanding planter width and how you can get bigger trees in there and then how that bumps us closer to forty percent. So um, yes, we have, we have been studying that.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I, uh, Mr. I have one addition uh to Rob's comments, if I might. Uh, it does not rely, uh, Rob can correct me if I'm wrong. It doesn't rely on backyard trees. Uh, we're really trying to focus the forty percent, getting to the forty percent on um, the resource overlay, some open space that I mentioned earlier, the street trees. There will be some all other trees that are planted in multi-famil- or uh multi-unit and mixed-use areas as part of landscaping requirements. Uh, there's some minimal tree planting requirements on middle, for middle housing that gives us some, but it's, it doesn't. The, the backyard trees have the issue that, that uh the commenter posed was that they're the most likely to be cut down, the hardest to enforce. And um, so the, the, the path to getting to the forty percent for the whole area is uh not in the backyard for the most part.
Yeah, uh, and we studied, we studied that extensively. It's pretty negligible. After resource overlay and street trees, it's then um, you know, trees and open spaces. And even that's a pretty smaller, it's a pretty small percentage. It's the first two that are doing the heavy lifting.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Uh, thank you. All right, the commission calls on Stuart to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, are you hearing me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Stuart Honeyman. I'm at one five seven one four Tumbleweed Turn, Sisters, Oregon. And I'm an owner of a piece of property in the Cooper Mountain Expansion Area. And yeah, I planted trees there thirty, almost thirty years ago. And they're a row crop. And um, I am curious if there, if the exemption for agricultural row crops has survived to this point. Um, can I shoot that one to Rob or Brian?
Yes, yes, the exemption remains. Uh, the expectation is that that land is better suited for housing and agricultural trees can be removed.
Okay, and then we can still do the new planting. And if need be, fee and lieu. Is that how we would proceed?
Are you asking if there's going to be replanting for the agricultural trees or something else on the site?
No, for uh when it is converted from tree farm to residential. Um, there's still gonna be canopy requirements, aren't there?
Um, there, I would have to, I mean, yours, I think your site is large and there might be different conditions, so I can speak broadly, but for the removal of agricultural trees, there's no replanting, no fee and lieu. You can just, you know, take them down. Um, but for trees that would be inside the overlay um and other existing trees on the site, then yes, you would have the option of removing and paying fee and lieu.
Okay, all right. Well, we want to uh comply with the general conditions and I envision it being well-planted once it is converted. And yeah, I also appreciate all the hard work the commission's doing and the staff is doing. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Uh, the commission, do you have any questions with the speaker? I don't see any, so we'll move on. Um, the commission calls, and I apologize, I'm just gonna have to say your number. Uh, one nine seven one two four four two two zero one. Uh, please state, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Hello.
Uh, yeah, yeah, this is Dick Scout and uh I wanted to speak actually on the first topic. I'm, my apologies. I tried to, to get in on my Zoom with my phone and I was unsuccessful. So uh is it possible for me to speak on the first topic, which is the parks piece?
Yes, thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Again, my name is Dick Scout and I live at one five four one zero Southwest Heron Court in Beaverton, nine seven oh oh seven. Um, I think that um the staff uh from THPD, um Ms. Aisha Panis really covered uh some excellent points that I was gonna cover, that she covered them better than I, I could. So rather than being ducative, let me just uh, uh, speak on a couple of points that haven't been raised. Uh, bringing the perspective of a former county commissioner who was on the county board of commissioners for about twenty years. And I wanted to say that I was always grateful that representing District One, Alawa, Beaverton, Cooper Mountain, that the entire district was served by the park district. In contrast to other uh urban unincorporated parts of the county that were not uh getting a park services uh either from a city or, or from anyone else. And um we constantly heard, and I think notably that area would be Bull Mountain in particular. We always heard chronically from unhappy residents who were not, who did not have a park in their neighborhood. And again, I was always very grateful for DHPD that they served my entire district. Uh, I found them to be an excellent park district. Uh, they were great partners. And I would suggest that the city, uh just like the county and in the urban parts of the counties that are served by the park district, we really look to the, to the, to the park district to be our park provider. And we really look to them for expertise. And I would really caution uh the city uh to uh second guess uh the standards of service that the park district have spent many years putting together. And they bring in expertise that frankly neither the county nor the city have with respect to parks. Though unless there's some really compelling reasons, which I have not heard, but I've heard some excellent uh rationales from, from the park district tonight, uh that call for uh level of service that uh would not call for any reduction in the number of neighborhood parks. And that neighborhood parks have a very different and distinct purpose uh different from, from a regional park such as a nature park. That I would suggest that you um not make any reductions in the number of neighborhood parks that are to uh that are proposed for the Cooper Mountain area. Um, I, I think for the city to be a good partner, I think it's, it's good to ask hard questions and to understand exactly how the park district came up to their conclusions. But um I would caution about second guessing in an area that frankly the city doesn't have the expertise in. And um, I um, I would say again with elected officials that uh it has been very frustrating in the past at, at, at our county level to have neighborhoods that didn't have park service and uh they were frustrated and we were frustrated. So I would suggest trying to avoid that problem in Cooper Mountain going forward as a city. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, commissioners, do you have any questions with the speaker? No? All right. Um, thank you very much. Uh, so it looks like um Mimi Dukas, I see your hand up again. Were you hoping to speak a second time?
Yes, I was. I picked out and I wasn't able to respond, so.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, um, so staff said that we could meet the uh forty percent tree coverage using the resource preservation, but there's parcels that don't have any natural resource overlay on their property. So they would have to meet that standard um outside the resource overlay. And again, I don't know how you can hit that standard without putting trees absolutely everywhere, including in the backyards, particularly if street trees are not included. And actually, as I'm looking at this standard that I referenced under sixty dot sixty one dot thirty, it actually says at the beginning, we have to have have to hit a fifty percent tree uh canopy coverage. Um, which is that much worse. So I, there's multiple, there's forty percent listed, there's fifty percent listed, and that's a conflict. Um, and again, I don't know how you meet that without a resource overlay area to stuff all these trees in. So I think that needs to be revisited.
Staff, did you want to respond or?
Sure, um, I'll just reiterate that the, the forty percent target is for the plan area. Some sites will offer more tree canopy, some sites will offer less. Um, each site will not provide forty percent tree canopy. Um, if people meet the, the standards, then it's a lower threshold. Um, if people wanted an alternative approach, that's where the forty percent and fifty percent come in. But nobody has to do that. That's discretionary. If people meet the standards, then um, you know, it is a lower amount.
Wait, if we meet what standard?
The standards in sixty, sixty one, fifteen and sixty, sixty one, twenty. So if you meet those standards, then you don't have to look at the guidelines in the later sections.
So do the canopy coverage only kick in if you're removing existing canopy? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
The code is not clear in that regard. This looks like a canopy coverage standard regardless of canopy removal. It looks like any development in Cooper Mountain has to hit a forty or fifty percent tree canopy coverage. So you might wanna revisit how the, the language is written, cuz it's, it's alarming.
We can take a look at it.
Thank you.
True.
Okay. Commissioners, any, any questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. Um, and it looks like I, I don't see anyone, any other public comment. Um, so um, with that, uh that is the end of our meeting. So I see we are now adjourned at eight fifty nine. with that, uh, that is the end of our meeting. So I see we are now adjourned at eight fifty nine PM.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.